It's seven o'clock. Thanks to everybody for being here. Appreciate that the whole board is present. So I'll call the board to order. We have a select board meeting and then a liquor control commissioners meeting. Is there any action on the agenda that was posted?
Yeah, I'd like to add a few things.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add a short update and discussion about Bravo. The restorative justice program. And then I think we have to revisit the library. The library issue. Dave asked us to put that back on the agenda for this time.
You want to do those as 5A and 5B? Is that an okay spot?
Sure. And then the third one and the last one I have is just a short discussion since we're all here about when it might be right to go back to in-person meetings.
5C?
Sure.
Okay. Yep. Anyone else with anything to add to the agenda? If not, all in favor of the agenda as proposed to be amended, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Item two, approval of the minutes of August 10th.
Excuse me, did anybody make a motion? I didn't hear a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. There are motion to adopt the agenda.
And Tracy, you're muted.
I'll make that motion, Seth.
Thanks, Brian. Mr. Coolidge moves. Mr. Giles seconded, and we voted in favor unanimously. Is there a motion regarding the minutes of August 10th?
I'll move.
Mr. Wyman moves to approve.
I'll second that.
Second from Mr. Coolidge or Mr. Giles. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were submitted? Don't believe so. All in favor of the minutes as submitted, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Doug Bailey abstains from the absence. Otherwise, that was four to zero to one. Item three, town manager's report, Mr. Atherton.
Okay. Last report for the week, so August 10th and August 17th. I don't have a lot on here because most of what I was doing was Park Street and segment six. So segment six, concrete removal continues in preparation for setting steel beams. It's a long, drawn-out, loud process. Park Street granite curb installation started last week around where the bio swells will be located. And just to let you know, I'm trying to work a deal out with V-Trans to see if we can get our spring paving done this fall instead of holding off till spring. I have thrown a little bit around with them that there could be some values, some money saved if they were to do it now because then they wouldn't have to raise structures again in the spring and mill the intersection out. So I'm hoping that they take our request and then we don't have to go through another winter with the road not completely done. So more to come on that. Other happenings, I did attend the Rutland Regional Planning Commissioners Meeting via Zoom on the 20th. I was asked to attend. It was mostly on solar sighting, so. And had a video meeting with Watershed Consulting and NRCS to complete more of the stormwater runoff work in the town. One of the, if you remember, we did that big stormwater master plan probably four or four or five years ago. And I did receive a grant here last spring. It's 100% covered to do work in the parking area behind Bernie Carr's shop and bioswell work on Pearl Street. So we're hoping to start doing some site work there just to do a little scoping to see what's involved. And yeah, we're going to move forward with that one. I did, at the time I wrote this, I had started submitting COVID-19-related expenses to FEMA and the state. The state I did last week and FEMA completed this morning. So unfortunately, we're required to submit to both of them now. And we'll see what happens. So FEMA's covering 75% and looks like the state won the local, I can't remember what it's called now. We'll pick up the rest. That's what I'm told right now. So we'll see what happens. But we're all submitted up to June 30th and then we'll submit again the end of the year. Rec News, there's a lot here, so I'll try to skip some. In partnership with Paramount Theater, John McCurnan Drive-In opened on 8th and 9th with Grease. And they had welcomed local food vendors in Estabrook to sell their wares. Walking Stick Theater was granted the nonprofit slot and the students who are traveling to Scotland are selling popcorn, soda, and treats to raise money. By opening up Estabrook to food vendors, we created a market for these folks. So otherwise, we'd be on the brink of losing businesses. Brandon Rec receives $5 a ticket sold to the Paramount, and the Paramount accepts responsibility for the movie rights, projection, and marketing. So we make a little money there and it's a good time and it's selling out. August 21st, we've created Friday Night Pickup Series with Carter Insurance out of Bristol. Each week, a local singer will be featured and will perform literally on the back of a pickup truck. These performances will be socially distanced and masks will be required by the audience. In addition, all performers will be within the family pod. This means on any given night, the only people performing together will have been living together during quarantine. And on Saturday nights, we'll be hosting a variety of presentations from local businesses. August 22nd, the Schwan Frozen Food Truck will be at Estabrook. Little Caesar's fundraiser for cheerleaders will be held on another night, and Maple Producers will be there. So more to come on that. Peewee Cheer just wrapped up their summer season with 12 kids participating. Cornhole's been active throughout the summer with consistent numbers. The Italian Film Series has been consistent in following specific COVID-19 guidelines. Art for the Heart paintings will be collected in September with an October showing at the library. And going forward, we'll be holding youth cheer and youth soccer, as well as developing active safe sports for kids. We're in communication with Stafford for development of a fishing access on Wheeler Road and also a walking trial at Estabrook. Both suggested activities for individuals. And that's what I have for this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Atherton. Are there any questions for the town manager from the board? I won't go through each board member's names, so just pipe up if you have a question or comment for the town manager. Mr. Giles?
Yeah, I got into an interesting conversation with Bernie Carr the other day. We were walking through town. And he asked about the trimming of the trees and making it so branches didn't hang down at head height. And I was curious as well. I mean, I often walk Carver Street, and both of us were commenting on the, you know, when you walk at night, you can't see whether the trees, the limbs are hanging down and you kind of get them in your face and all. And so I was just curious whether there's a plan or someone's responsibility to manage the.
Yep, there's a plan, and we're told not to trim in the first year. So actually, we're told not to trim them for first and second years. So we do have a, we do have a plan that was created by UVM Extension Service. It's actually a five-year plan that was done, geez, before we even started the project, so.
And so what about like Carver Street that isn't new growth? It's like sidewalks that have been here for a long time and trees and bushes and whatnot?
Yeah, we can go and take a look at them.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions or comments from the board before we ask the public?
I have questions.
Doug Bailey.
Okay, I'm sorry. Some of my questions may have been answered in prior meetings, David, so I'm not trying to upset you. I'm just trying to get up to date.
Okay.
Newton Road, is there anything new on new buyouts on Newton Road?
Nope. The only one that we have right now is 389 Newton Road. That's the only one that's in the works. The last two actually both rescinded.
Okay.
So that's it.
Is 89 Newton Road below the sewer plant or above it?
389 is right next door to it. So the other side would be the east side.
So there still will be one property below the sewage treatment plant?
Right, but those aren't serviced by the sewer treatment plant anyway. Those are actually on site. So yeah, the one at the end actually rescinded, so.
Okay. One other question on Newton Road, and it's interesting because you just mentioned fishing access on Wheeler Road or something. Is there, is there any plans to do something with the two lots that we got side by side that would get access to the river for the public for fishing or things like that maybe?
Well, we've had lots of ideas. Bill Moore has a new one just about every day.
Okay.
We did speak with Fish and Wildlife back when we purchased the old Tubbs building to see if they were interested, and they weren't at that point. So if we can ask again, you know, it would have, it just would have been nice to have them do them, but I'm sure we could do something down there, too. I'd have to look at insurance for that. And, you know, we talked about just doing a ball field down there, too, because it's pretty flat. So yeah, certainly worth looking into.
Okay, I still got a couple more, I'm sorry. I'm wondering on the Churchill Road thing. I know the bridge is down, the culvert's done. Have we cut the road open into the parking lot yet?
Oh, culvert's done. I don't believe the Forest Service has reached out to Sean yet about, because we did get some funding. Forest Service asked us if we'd help them maintain that road and clean the parking area out. I don't think they've done that yet. You can drive down there. You know, it's just the parking lot's a little overgrown, that's all.
Yeah, somebody asked me if they could go in there yet, so I told them I had no idea yet, so I was gonna check.
They can go down there. It's all safe to drive down to there.
Okay. Town Hall roof, that side addition, is that something we're moving forward with after the sale of that other property?
Yep, actually, I'm moving forward with it now. We just had to submit our fire safety permit again for it because of the change on the plan. So that went out, I think, Friday. And I've got right construction lined up to start when they can. So yeah, we're just, we're moving forward with it. Sue and I found some funding to, you know, some funds to cover it, and we certainly could look at, you know, the proceeds from the DIN property to go in the part of that.
So we expect to have it done then before snow season this year?
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, one last question. Wondering on the status of our personnel at this point, DPW, PD, and what may be happening or not happening with the school resource officer? You know, I know it was one of our police officers we were going to be sharing with, but where's, school is kind of opening on a very limited status or statute. What's going on?
So the school still wanting to move forward with that, with the school resource officer? We actually had a contract going around with chief and the superintendent, myself and our town attorney to get that, get that rolling, and they still want him down there. So that's still happening because there's still, I guess there's still going to be students at the school. If they don't have internet access, they can still go. We do have an officer in training right now, Chris Bowman. I think, I think Chief and I were just talking. He's looking at a schedule for academy in two weeks. Is that right? Yeah, okay. I'm getting a thumbs up, so. DPW, we're all good there. Nothing's changed there. We got the same guys we've had. They're doing a phenomenal job. There's just one thing you might want to know that they have, they've been prepping for this, the structure to come down there, the, you know, the big hut, whatever we call it today. So that should be here like mid-September. So we'll have that all prepped and ready to go. And they've done, they've done all the work in-house and it's great. I think that's it. Well, we did hire a person to do assistance assessor position, so.
Assistant assessor, okay. And so with the, the one officer going into training, when that training is done, are we back to 100% or are we, where are we at there?
I think we're still down one.
Still down one after that?
No.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Anyone else on the board? Any members of the public with questions or comments for the town manager?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Brent Puler. Dave, can you refresh my memory when the warranty period for the new trees and bushes expires? I know there was an extension or something.
A warranty from Casella?
Yeah.
That's a year.
It's a year, so.
The year after, it's a year after we close the project out.
Oh, and that's not done, right?
So we got, we got a couple months to go.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you, Dave.
All right.
Other questions or comments from the public for the town manager tonight?
Yes, Seth, I'd like to say something. Dave, possibly a lot of the, a lot of the trees I was talking about when I was talking with Tim are on private property. And I thought maybe if you stuck something in the reporter suggesting that people get them trimmed up out of the way for safety, they might just take care of a lot of that themselves. And then if they don't, you're going to go through and do it. And I know if I was worried about my trees, I'd make sure I got it done myself before the town had to come through and do it themselves.
Yeah, we've done that a couple times with not-so-happy customers. Yeah, I can look into that, Bernie.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
I need it in front of my house, too, so don't call me.
Yeah, I'll be right up there tonight with a chainsaw.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the public for the town manager? If not, we'll go on to public comment and participation. We'll start with the board. Any items not on the agenda tonight that anyone on the board needs to raise? I did just want to, I guess for the minutes, confirm, we got an email about some debris in the waterfall today, or over the weekend, maybe. And Mr. Atherton has taken care of the manufactured stuff that was in the waterfall, you know, at the dam kind of behind Blue Moon. And the state wants, the state's general feeling is that natural stuff like logs and so forth becomes part of fish habitat and that they will need to be asked if we want to move stuff like that. So Dave has asked in the past, I guess, do you have anything else you want to talk about in terms of what you plan to do or don't plan to do and why?
With, with stuff in the river?
With the natural debris there.
Yeah, I mean, it is pretty low and most of it's outside of the river right now. So, you know, if it impaired our, our culvert, we'd be able to pull it out. And I mean, if it's on the riverbank, we can take it, but nothing really seems to be floating around in there right now. It's pretty low. So yeah, we did, we pulled the sign and one of the orange barrels out of there today, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did have a resident raise the issue and that Dave did act very swiftly to get rid of the stuff that clearly legally we can get rid of or remove, and that there's some other considerations regarding the, the natural debris that winds up in rivers. Is there other public comment or participation tonight? From anyone in attendance? Representative Stephanie Jerome?
Thank you. Just a few things. I wanted to make sure that folks were aware of some of the newer economic, the emergency economic recovery grants that have come through. First of all, the money has been completely spent that was dedicated to women-owned businesses, but there still is money available for minority-owned businesses. But generally, there is still a large amount of money. I think somewhere near $50 million is still available in these funds. And there's a couple of them that are very specific to Brandon. I think that their business, a lot of branded businesses could take advantage of the forest economy stabilization, the forest economy stabilization program. So that's any business that is wood-related. So whether it's manufacturing wood products, logging, or forestry, those businesses can, can take advantage of that grant program. And then there's also childcare provider grants, which will help childcare providers get reimbursed for any expenses that they incurred because of COVID-19 when taking care of children. Then just last week was announced that they, for businesses that are in lodging or retail or hospitality or the arts or anything that's associated with holding a large gathering. So that money has been increased. So if you've already received a grant and you're in that sector, you can reapply and perhaps receive more. And the next thing is that tomorrow, the legislature will start again. We're going to be working for the next four to six weeks pretty much all day and working on the budgets that we weren't able to close out because of COVID-19. So that'll start tomorrow. If anyone's interested in watching any of the proceedings, it's all available on YouTube, all the committee hearings and the legislature itself, the General Assembly. And yes, so you could go to the Vermont Legislature website to view those. And then lastly, I during normal times, prior to COVID, I was holding constituent coffee hours pretty regularly at the McClure Library or Brandon Free Library and Sudbury. And I'm going to start those again on Saturday mornings from nine to 10:00. And my first one will be in Pittsburgh this Saturday, outside, socially distanced, wearing masks. And if anybody would like to come, they could bring their folding chair or sit in one of the area picnic tables that are offered at both McClure Library and the Brandon Library. So that'll be starting on Saturday. And as always, I'm available for, if anyone has any questions or concerns about legislative, legislature, upcoming legislative legislative activities, and I'm happy to help at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Jerome. That's great.
You're welcome.
Other public comment or participation tonight?
Seth, can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, please.
Stephanie, where in Pittsburgh on Saturday and what time?
McClure Library.
Okay.
At nine o'clock.
Thank you.
And I'll be meeting at nine o'clock of the following week in Brandon. And then I'll be sitting outside the Sudbury Town Meeting Hall on nine o'clock. I might feel a little lonely. If anyone's driving on Route 30 at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, stop by and see me. But I want to make myself available to all the towns or in our district. So, but, and so next week, I'll be at the Brandon Free Library.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment or participation? There's an opportunity at each agenda item as well. I have been asked if we could try to identify everybody who's in the meeting tonight for the minutes. Would the person who's got the telephone number that ends in 2121 identify themselves, please?
Jordan Sage from Brandon Rescue.
Great, thanks, Jordan. I think that was it that was uncertain, right? Yep, okay, perfect. I'm shaking heads. Item five, then, there's a proposal from the Vermont State Police regarding dispatch fees that we have received. Mr. Atherton, do you want to introduce this to the board or Chief Brakel weigh in, whatever?
Doesn't matter. I can speak until I have nothing left to say.
I don't have the documents in front of me, so you have the email. Go right ahead.
Okay. So as you know, we've been talking about this for the last few years on patch. And in your packets, I sent you a letter that we received on the 18th that breaks down the dispatch fees for, you know, the towns they're covering. And Brandon is on here. Staring right at it in front of me here. If you look at the chart here, that it bases it on, on the calls and the number of calls and an average call, cost per call, which it comes out to about $45,000, $46,000 a year. They're going to break this down into a four-year increment and start us at like $11,000 and then $22,000 and $34,000 and then 40, just under 46. So it's based on 856 calls a year. So just wanted to get that in front of you. It looks like this is going to become effective, I believe, in 2022. Yeah. So that's something I just wanted to put in front of you so I know it's something that we'll have in our budget for next year.
And if I could add, just, just so that you're aware, the town of Brandon paid dispatching services years ago, I believe, I think we were paying about $60,000. And that was quite a few years ago. And the Department of Public Safety had basically different agreements with multiple towns, and none of them were really based on any factual percentage. And so over the last few years, the legislature and the Department of Public Safety has talked about charging for fees for dispatching services because it is a service that they provide. And although we do take calls directly at our office, the state police still receive a lot of number of calls and also 911 calls that go through them that can eventually come to us. So this, this topic has been on the table within the legislature for the last four or five years at least, and it's been the subject of numerous studies. And the costs that are being provided to us now are on a phased-in. And that's thanks to Stephanie. I don't know how much you've been involved in this, but I know Representative Shaw has been for multiple times just slowly phasing in these costs of dispatching services. So they're starting us at 25% two years from now and then phasing it in over a three-year period to get us up to the actual cost of what it costed the service for dispatching to fill a seat of a dispatcher.
Thank you, Chief, for that information. I think that, yeah, this is something that we have been talking about for a long time and wondering what was going to act, what form it would actually take. And to me, this seems like doing it on a per-call basis, parading it that way among the towns seems really equitable. And I think it's quite clear that they're phasing it in over a four-year period that's not even going to start until next year. So I appreciate that they've sent this material to us, and I think that we surely can, in the town budget building process, we surely can recognize that dispatching is a very important part of the overall protection of persons and property that is the business of the town government. Any other comments?
Yeah, Doug Bailey here. I read it with interest. We've been knowing this is going to come down the pike for quite a while. But I have to say that I was fairly pleased that it was as reasonable as it is. I was expecting way worse as far as cost.
Other comments?
Yeah, if I can chime in here.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, I had a conversation this afternoon with Robert Schlacter, former Rutland City Fire Chief, but he is also the president of the Rutland County Firefighters Association. There are 20 fire departments in Rutland County that are dispatched out of Westminster. So the county association is also involved with this. So they're, they're working with them, with the captain of the state police. And he's, he's working on setting up a meeting with department chiefs so that they can sit down and hash out any questions that need to be raised in this timeframe. Looking at this, it's been 26 years since we left the Thomas Answering Service. So it's been 26 years of free dispatching that we've had between fire police and rescue that has been taken on by the state police. So if we calculated any of that into these current numbers, it's, we've gotten a lot, a lot for nothing for 26 years. So looking at it, we are just shy of $23,000 between the three entities, just for Brandon. And also, the thing is, is these are also, the numbers that they provided are also 2018 call data. I know that fire and EMS have both gone up over the last, I'm sure PD is the same, your call that call volume over the last year, two years. So they're, they record everything that they do, and they'll have updated. It'll be a per-call basis. So at the end of this, you know, based on the numbers for 2018, we're in the $92,000 a year range for dispatching for the three entities for the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom, for that context. I hope the fire department and the rescue squad will also be able to work this into their budgets in a, in a way that's not too disruptive to them. Just on a side bit of context, I was talking with Dave about this this week, and my mother was a dispatcher. That was her job. She was a 911 dispatcher. Just on a side bit of context, I was talking with Dave about this this week, and my mother was a dispatcher. That was her job. She was a 911 dispatcher. For her last several years of working and the way that they did it back in Massachusetts was every town for itself kind of thing. And my little town that I grew up in of. Three thousand people now, they had a two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar dispatch budget because they had to have someone in the chair. With benefits twenty-four hours a day and cover vacations and training and all that kind of stuff. And I think that. Doing it in a collaborative way with the other towns, using the state police service. To get the service that we need, even though it's going to cost us something on a per-call basis, I think even at ninety thousand dollars among the town. Police and the fire and the rescue, I think still is, is going to be seen to be good value for money. Any other public comment on the dispatch fees? If not, we'll go ahead along to item five A, which is a Bravo update. Mr. Giles?
Yeah, thanks. So Bravo, as you know, is a restorative justice program here in Brandon, which I'm the chair of now. And we've actually been quite busy this last six months. We've had two adult cases and eight juvenile cases. And part of our process is trying to. Figure out how to restore harm done kind of thing. Sometimes this is as simple as writing an apology letter or. Or something like that. Oftentimes, it represents some form of community service to try to. You know, patch up a break with the community. And. It's been challenging finding opportunities for people to do volunteer work with COVID. But recently, we've had some really big successes. We, the senior center, Kathy Mathis, has agreed to let someone come in and help. Work some of the grounds around the senior center. Judy Pulsofer at Nashouby School has. Allowed one of the young people to come and do some work on the woods around the school. And it, one of our young people said he likes to work outside, likes to work with his hands, and it struck me. That I, you know, I wondered if we could find some way that he could help out with, you know, grounds work in town somehow. And I realize in this litigious environment that it's. Challenging to think about having kids, you know, and I mean kids, I mean, talk thirteen, fourteen-year-olds. You know, working in a, in a town context. But I'm wondering, as a community, you know, since we're a small community and then. We can be creative. I'm wondering if there's any kind of creative way we could have a young person occasionally do some outside work with. You know, with our grounds department.
So Tim, we've done this in the past with, with some folks.
Oh, good.
Not really through the highway department, but more through, kind of more through direct department.
Yeah, okay.
Which you probably saw that all the park benches were polyurethane and water sealed this weekend and everything. And. So it creates a little bit of an issue with highways, seeing as how we have equipment and, you know, those guys don't really have time to watch folks. So. If, if there's someone that needs to do that, you know, Bill and I can certainly sit down with them and. We've, we've had good luck with it in the past. So but. We'd like to keep some guidance there, so.
No, that's totally understandable. Thanks.
Sure.
And if anybody who's listening now. Can think creatively about, you know, the kinds of community service that might be available in our community, I would love to know about them. Because that's probably one of the most challenging aspects of our work is constantly looking for good volunteer opportunities that match the skills of our participants with the needs of the community. And allow them to be appreciated in our community.
Tim, I, I don't know if it would be worth it, but if there's any connection with the downtown Brandon Alliance, that there may be some opportunities there, and I. Don't know Bernie could speak to that, but it seems like businesses struggle enough in trying to. Do the things that they try to do and maintain their properties, and sometimes they are the victims of some of the. Issues that Bravo faces. So maybe someone with the downtown Brandon Alliance could connect with some of these people that are, are able to provide some community service.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Giles, for that information, and thanks to all who had. Feedback on it. Before we go to the next item, I've been asked to see if we could have the person calling from telephone number that ends in three, four, five, eight. Identify themselves for the minutes.
Hi, yes, that's Sherry Becarella.
Oh, hi, Sherry. Thanks. Sherry Becarella. Great. Okay, so five B is the Brandon Library Grant.
Yeah, I noticed that Dave asked us to put this back on the agenda, and so. I'm not sure if we need to discuss this, but I, I would make a motion that we adopt this or adopt this grant again.
Would you like just a brief, briefly, brief summary? So when this was first done, the library did not receive the grant. They're going to reapply again, and so we just have to go through the process again, and it's the same resolution that the board signed. But eight months ago or whatever. So that's it. Same exact project.
Great. So there's a motion to again sign the resolution for the grant application on behalf of the library. For a second?
I got a second.
From Mr. Wyman and Mr. Coolidge, is there any discussion? There is not. All in favor of signing the resolution a second time for the grant for the library application. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it unanimous. Item five C. Regarding the select board meetings by Zoom or in person. Mr. Giles, you asked for this?
Yeah, I just interested to say that, you know, as, as I move through the world in this strange COVID time. I find different parts of my life working to get back into what approach of normalcy. And, and I'm thinking, I'm interested to see what other people think about the possibility of resuming in-person meetings. I think there's certain benefits to actually being in a room together. And with the example of the Italian night, because I actually have attended a couple of those. I think the upstairs of the town hall has room for us to be distant, so we're not close to each other, and yet it would all be in one place.
Any thoughts on the board?
Well, I, Doug Bailey here. I concur. I feel that it's time. I feel very safe in Vermont with our numbers as they are at this point. I feel upstairs. As Tim suggests, would be a pretty nice place to, to do it. There's ventilation and there's room to space out. And I, I think that if we can. Be holding things like Pee-wee cheerleading and cornhole and film series, then we can be meeting as a select board. That's my input.
I have a question that I don't see that Bill Moore is on the call, but maybe Dave can answer. Dave, if we moved to meeting together in person upstairs in the town hall, do you think it's within the town's technological. Abilities to provide a Zoom. Kind of interface so that people who have been participating from their homes or who might. Like to participate from their homes in the future and not show up in person. You know, appear on monitor or something along those lines?
I think we could figure something out. I think moving forward, we're going to have to continue to hold this via Zoom no matter what anyway.
Yeah, I was thinking, as Representative Jerome was talking about the legislature going back, like I saw some news stories and they showed pictures of, you know, the Senate chamber with some big panels at the front so that. A few of them are in the room and the rest of them are not. And I wonder if, if the town could do that, I'd feel a lot better. That people wouldn't have to make any kind of decision between whether their own health permitted them to attend or their comfort with, you know, public health permitted them to attend.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I expressed my concern the last time when this was brought up. You know, the events that, that I did speak about with rec were all outdoors events, so a little different. VTRN still isn't back. They're not going back till maybe the end of the year. Now they don't know. None of my other meetings that I'm attending, like the planning commissioners, regional planning or transportation are meeting in person. So I don't know. I. I don't feel good about it because we, we can't, we can't control who walks through the door. And that's, that's my concern. But that's definitely up to the board, so.
Heard from three. The other two have any thoughts?
I'm. I guess I'm, I'm content doing what we're doing. If it was to go, I, I could go either way, but I'm as much content. Via Zoom. Probably as martial than I would be in person.
Okay.
I just didn't keep it away for a while.
Okay, so. Two, two ready to meet again in person, two ready to stick with Zoom.
Makes Mr. Hopkins a tie vote breaker.
Hate to be the swing vote on some of them. We, Charlene? Yeah, Charlene.
I'm more comfortable with Zoom now that I have a vote in this, but. The, the college where I'm working, our office is not going back until probably November, December, and then they're saying. Might not be viewed then. Their feeling is if you can do the same work. As efficiently and effectively as you can in person, they prefer that we. You know, socially distanced and not. Bring too many people together to.
Valid point of view, no doubt. Chief Brockell?
I just wanted to point out that most of the people that I know, at least in state government, no one is returning to any kind of. Real-life face-to-face meetings until after the first of the year. And just keep in mind that if you should decide to go to a combination of in, in-person meetings. That you would have to determine how many people can meet in the meeting space and be meeting the social distance requirements. And then do you have to follow a sort of a signup sheet as to how many seats are available and who would apply or to just become first come, first served as the people show up? And then some people may not be included in the meeting because they can't make it. So just things to consider while you're deciding that.
Thank you. Thank you for that additional.
And I mean, I guess the other thing I'd like to add in there that. If they did decide to go in-person meetings, I would try it. But if I wasn't comfortable and didn't be there, I would hope there would be something for Zoom because I, I wouldn't meet in person.
So one thing I wonder too, like what we have to do in the office if someone comes in. And, you know, certainly it's, it's constant down in the town clerk's office. That they have to do a little form, you know, with have you been sick? Have you gone anywhere? And we have to take everyone's temperature when they walk in the door. So. I know that, you know, majority, well, I shouldn't even say majority. I know some of you don't have to deal with this every day, but we're living it every day. And it's, it's a bit stressful, and I don't know how I'd feel about having a gathering. With people that we're not, we're not really sure who's going to show up or where they've been or what's going on with them. I think I said before, I would just as soon do Zoom, and I probably still would because I have a family and. I don't want to bring that home to them either. It's been, it's been stressful enough keeping the office open since March.
Yeah, I, I, I hear all this, and it all makes sense. I, I think the part that I'm. Trying to make sense of is, for example, this Italian night, you know, anybody can go to that. It's, you don't know who's going to be there and, and the sign, the sign-in process is fairly efficient. Two, three questions and, you know. Wearing masks. So I, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, when we can do something like that because it's. Because they're already doing.
I think that the board wants to meet together in person at some point, and the question is really when to, you know, when is the best. Way to do it safely, or when is the best time to do it safely? I will, you know, say that when we did decide to have a Zoom meeting back in March. We actually said we would do it for the duration of the state of emergency. And the state of emergency has been continually extended and is now, I believe, September fifteenth. Unless someone needs to correct me about that date.
I think you're correct.
I, I think Charlene's point is, you know, well-taken. Everybody's points are well-taken. It seems to me that. I don't feel Zoom is as efficient or effective, to be candid with you. I really don't. I think we are losing something not meeting together, and these meetings are taking longer than they used to. But I, I think that there are, there are enough public health concerns, I think, in the community and among the professionals in the, in the meeting tonight. Have been expressed that I don't think we ought to be the leading edge on the reopening. Public meetings to be in person. So I'd like to hang on through September fifteenth anyway and see if the state of emergency is in fact again extended. And just reassess it from time to time. Any objection to go in that route? Sticking with Zoom, discussing as we're able. Okay. Thanks. Item six is then to reconsider the policy for selling a town asset. So. I want to suggest to the board that we do this in a, in a less formal way than we might usually. Because I think it's important that people get heard. Especially people who have done work on, on a project regarding this. So there are right now two different policy drafts before the board. And rather than someone just moving and seconding and let's vote on one, I really would like to. The board to feel that we can have an open discussion. Our rules permit that because we work on the rules for small boards. We can have discussions before motions. So I would, I would like the board to at least consider offering both drafters of the policy an opportunity to. Advocate for their, for their proposed policy. Any objection to go in that route on this item? If not. There's, there's two here. I don't know, Mr. Giles, would you want to, you worked on one?
When I looked at the minutes from July 27th, I think. I said that Tracy would be bringing back a. An update to the policy. And so I thought I'd leave it up to Tracy to introduce.
Okay. Tim and I kind of worked on this. Policy. Changing things around a little bit with a bid procedure. I. We just wanted something that was going to be a little more efficient. The. You know, the process that we came up with was would be to put stuff out to auction. On a name, the date that it would go to auction, and it'd be auctioned at that particular time. You know, we went back and forth. Tim and I did. And this is, that's what we came up with. It would be a, you know, that we'd do a bid. Procedure. The day of the sale. I, I noticed in the one that the attorney had looked at, that possibility is still in there, so. I'll let Tim jump in with anything. You'd like to put in on that?
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well. If I'm. You know, introducing the, if I'm making the introduction of the policy, I would just point out a few. Aspects that went into our discussion that I think helps understand why we reach what we reached. The, we talked a lot about field bids, which, as you know, is kind of at the crux. The, we talked a lot about sealed bids, which as you know, is kind of at the crux of. Of the concern here. And. What struck me as I've been talking about this with people is that, um. This is a, this is a little bit like you sell something to a family member. Where you're actually interested in both people getting the most fair value. And you don't, it's not just a one-sided, like we want the best for one side and not the other side. Because even though as selectmen, we're representing the town and we want the town to get the best value. We actually are also representing the interests of our town people and so we want them to be sure they're getting the best value. In their, in the process. And. The, the two examples that I have been. Using in my head as I'm describing this. In the sealed bid process. If you think about when we first had that bid on the swamp land. That was very low. If that had been a sealed bid and nobody had known, you know, what the value of this land was. It's very possible that that bid would have been the only one and it would have been, you know, very low and the town wouldn't have had. A value. Where the, the land that would be fair. And similarly, on the other side of the coin, if you have a piece of adjoining property. You really would like to own and it comes up for sale. It's possible that you would pay a lot of money to get it because you really want it and yet. You shouldn't have to pay more than a market value. Which would come out from other people showing interest and, you know, and the market showing what the value of the property is. And so I think the sealed bids. You know, fail on both of those fronts. And, and that's why I, Tracy and I talked about this, the benefit of the auction. Where you actually have the market system working and the value coming out the most fair for both the town and the buyer. I think the, um. The other thing that I, I recognize that I, I had intended to put into the first policy, but I thought was relevant with this most recent policy. Which I think is also an element of Dave's. Policy suggestion, which is that, um. You know, the, the board is not required to take the high bid. There may be other aspects to a bid that are important to the, representing the best decision for the town. And so there's, it's always up to the discretion of the board to. Work with this policy or not, so if there becomes a situation where it's better not to work with the policy, the board can at its discretion make that choice. So we're not bound. By this. So that's, that's my ideas on this.
I'd like to go back and, and Tim and I had discussed. I personally, I like the sealed bid aspect of things. But this is what we agreed upon was. Was this year. What I do like about the, what I do like about with the sealed bid. It's a. I believe it's going to be a lot. I believe it'd be quick and efficient. And. As I said, I, either, either policy. I did notice in the one that Dave had the, the town attorney look over. We do have that option of doing, doing the same auction. It's not just a sealed bid. I believe. I, I do, I do like the idea that we put a minimum bid in on it, which we did put in our policy. And I believe that. With our policy that, that Tim and I drew up that we also had in there. A. Deposit, I, I think. I misunderstood, or I misunderstood Tim or. Misrepresented that, I, I didn't mean for every bidder to bring up. To put a bid deposit in, the winning bid. Should be expected to put a percentage.
That was the wording I intended, so I, I need to edit that.
Okay, that, I just, so people, just so the rest of folks know, that's what. I think the, wasn't, wasn't the bid, you didn't need, didn't, doesn't mean you need a bid deposit, it's just the winning bid would leave a deposit. And whatever policy the board decided to go with. I believe that. We still need a deposit. A percentage. That would go, whether it was sealed, whether it was, whatever policy it was.
Mr. Hopkins, do you want to talk about the draft that you proposed?
Sure, um, little history behind it, I did send. The last policy that you gentlemen approved to our town attorney because I do believe that did not happen and it was drafted last time. There were some concerns on it with some language in it.
Could you be specific about what the problem?
Can I finish, I let you do your presentation, can I finish mine? So. I decided to take a stab at it and pulled up a bunch of. Policies actually throughout the country of just how other cities and towns sell or dispose of. Equipment or property. And came up with some, with the policy that I sent to you gentlemen last week on the definitions with personal property and real property. That personal property would be examples of equipment and tools and vehicles. That we could. We could. Have an option of sealed bids, trade-in or, or auctioning off the equipment, I, I think as you guys all know, we do get. As history has shown, we got a better value on trade-in with vehicles and equipment than we have any other way. I recall of us selling a Land Rover that we had that was not great, that we didn't get a lot of money for. And as far as purse, as a real property, we do still have to follow state statute as you all know. With the ten sixty-one and there's a few other sightings in the policy that I did. And. I, I think this had come up. With the swamp lot that. We probably still would have sold and had on the tax books, but that's neither here nor there. To, to use a sealed bid process set, that select board can set a minimum bid amount and a deadline to accept bids. We can post them on the town website and the newspaper record and at the town offices and our usual notice boards. We can open bids just like we do with any other sealed bid process here in the town office when, you know, we, we do bids for a contractor for a project. Little, little backwards that way because we're doing sealed bids for the lowest bid on there versus the, the high bid. And then I can present the results to the select board at the following meeting. One, one reason. I, I don't, well, yeah, I'm going to compare a little bit here, I guess. Auction concerns me a little bit because none of us here are licensed auctioneers. So we'd have to do that, I don't understand how you could tell the highest. Auction. Person that you're not going to take their, the high bid because you, of some reason why. That seems to defeat the purpose of having an auction. And honestly. The less steps and I think as we saw in this last transaction. That it. It really set off some people in town, which I don't think that's a great thing that, you know, creating a policy to just. Irritate people is a good way to go, I think streamlined. If, you know, we add that next step with doing a sealed bid that was looked at with, in addition to the ten sixty-one notice where. We, we can put out. You know, that we have property that there's interest in property, we'll be accepting bids until. A deadline and then we start the process once the bids are open. It just seems to be more streamlined and more. Maybe normal as to what people are expecting on the way we would. Get rid of property or equipment. That's really all I have on there.
Mr. Giles, yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious to know the specific problems with the original policy that we currently have in place. So what did Connie say was the legal problem with it?
I didn't say there was a legal problem with it, Tim, and that's the ten sixty-one requirements, the problem was. The way that the, the bids were done, that we were. Taking offers, then making them public and then they were open until the next board meeting. That, that, that could have opened us up to some other issues with folks, you know, that. Were sort of disclosing. Everything and, you know, that would. That would create, well, it did create some issues.
Did it create something specifically, there was something specifically wrong with the current policy?
Yeah, we just, we made everybody's bids public notice and two people were fed up with it, I mean, I. I got phone calls from both of those folks, one was. Higher than the one that the board ended up accepting and they walked away because of the process. The next person, which was, which had bid on it too, had, I believe, called Seth as well and called me just. Totally upset about the process.
What I'm trying to understand is where the policy, what's, what the, what's written in the policy is a problem. And, and I.
That you're, that you're making everybody's bids public information the minute it comes into the town.
Which line of the policy is the problem?
The one that says that you're making bids public.
It doesn't say that anywhere.
In your, in your policy? And the one that the board approved?
It, it, it does say the sale amount is made public at a regular select board meeting. And so you're saying that's the, the, the problem. With the policy is that the sale amount should not be made public at a regular board meeting?
You made everybody's bids public before the end of the process.
And what's wrong with the policy? And I realize the implementation was problematic, but that's part of what I'm trying to separate here is the difference between what the policy said and how you chose to implement it.
Well, I, I mean, I take that as a personal hit there, Tim. When I received phone calls from residents stating that they're annoyed by what the policy is and that all of these offers were made public. Raises some concern.
I think that the policy was implemented the way that. It said it should be implemented, don't you think, I mean, I don't, I don't think we did other than what the policy called for. And there was, there was clearly some discontent on the part of. Two of the three people involved in the bidding process.
Well, right, is this, is this a question to me, Seth?
It's a comment.
Yeah, comment, so what I would say is if the people had been led to believe that the policy. If they had been given the expectation that the policy was going to play out as it played out, they wouldn't have been surprised. And the reason they were surprised is that. For some reason, they were led to believe that their, their bids would be secret. And I, that was never my intent with the policy.
Pretty bad assumption there, Tim. You created steps in this policy that weren't necessary in order for us to sell land. Folks are irritated about it, you know, if there's any other time where people are having an issue, if the tables are turned, there's, there's no problem with the select board coming to me saying you did something. You did something that took some people off. I've been stopped on the streets on your policy, I've had discussions everywhere with people who are like, what's going on with this policy? Because there was an article in the paper on it. It's, it's not an effective policy, there are twenty steps in it. It shouldn't be that difficult for someone to bid on property or equipment or anything else.
This is not difficult. There's nothing difficult in this policy.
Okay. So the, um, the policy that I put in your packets has been sent to our town attorney. They were happy with the language in it. She did add a couple more statutes in it when the twenty, and title twenty-four, just to cover all of the. Territory there.
So when you mentioned auction as one of the options in your policy. Are you suggesting you're going to have to get an auctioneer if you decide to auction something?
I suggested that as an option because it came up in one of the meetings, do we have to follow that one, I believe that the way I wrote it was that. Town manager and department head will determine which of these options will provide the most value at the time of disposition and make a recommendation to the select board.
Yeah, I would suggest that we don't have to hire an auctioneer to have something as simple as a in-person auction, I think that that can be done efficiently. On our own. One of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, you know, when I talked to. To Doug about his experiences with getting, disposing of property for the bank. He talked about the importance of marketing, you know, you have to let people know what you're selling if you want people to. Become interested enough to. You know. Generate the, the value for the, the item.
So, Tim, I, I honestly don't, I don't know if you think that we have like this plethora of land for sale in town, I mean, we. This all started. For us to get. Lots the town have owned for eighty years back on the tax books, that was the sole purpose behind it. The purchase price didn't really matter, it shouldn't matter, you know, there are some of those lots we logged and made way more than. You know, we would have just selling them outright with, so, you know, we've been very successful in this. And I know you're hung up on these swamp lots, we only have, I think, two left right now, they're not worth anything. You know, the five hundred dollars or whatever that was done would have gone. We don't actively try to sell much stuff anymore, we don't have a lot of inventory left to sell.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not hung up on swamp lots, I really was interested in an overarching policy that would be transparent. It would generate value for the town. And it would be expedient, those were the three things that, um, you know, that I've been using as a criteria for making the policy.
Well, I guess I would say that, you know, having it approved by our attorney, town attorney and. Having the right language in there to not jeopardize. Statue and to make it as simple for the public. Seems to be a good way to do it, I don't know how any one of these either policies is more transparent than the other, other than yours says. Greatest possible transparency in it, there, I mean, their public record, their public document that's going to be on our town website and in our ordinance book. Everything gets noticed in the paper, I don't know how more transparent it can be possibly made unless we go door to door.
No, 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 it's not meaning to go door to door, the transparent part comes in the process and this is where the sealed bid is not transparent. I mean, when I looked this up online and looked up, you know, real estate transactions and they talked about. And what you're giving up in our sealed bid is transparency. Because you don't have the ability to see value and the, the market doesn't have the chance to establish that.
So, so when you buy a piece of property and there's another offer on it with a Realtor, does the Realtor tell you how much the other person's made an offer with?
The Realtor definitely tells me how much I need to come in with if I want to outbid someone, yes.
Well, they're violating some, some rules there. I, you know, you and I could argue about this for the next three hours, so. I proposed something that was written, that was approved by our town attorney, I think it meets all of the criteria that we need and it's up to the board on how they want to vote on it.
Doug Bailey, you had something to say?
Yeah. For the sake of. Um, wanting to move on and, and. Bring it back to a more cordial discussion. I, I'm, I like both policies, I don't have a problem with either. I think we want to make it easy and, and transparent and, um, I don't think we need to beat up why the last one didn't work, it just didn't work. I, I like the, the, the fact that we want to. List properties or items that we're going to sell in the newspaper. Accept bids. And. You know, transact the business right away, I would suggest that when we do these items, it'd be part of whichever policy that says the, the bid would be opened. Either by the town manager, the day of a select board meeting or even open at a select board meeting. So that right away we can approve, the select board can approve the sale, so time is not going by and people wondering. You know, where things are, I, I think the quicker it happens, the better it happens. As I discussed with Tim, I, I only had a little, I have a little concern on, on the. The one process about if, if someone's unable to attend that they can, they can bid, you know, like I bid a hundred dollars more than. Anybody else. I guess it's, it's a nice way to bid, but it's letting somebody else set the market and. That, that's the only part of that. Policy that I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of because my thoughts are what if somebody says that they bid a hundred dollars more? And somebody else says they bid two hundred more. But still neither one of those bids reached their maximum bid, do we keep going adding a hundred and two hundred until we? But still neither one of those bids reached their maximum bid. Do we keep going adding 100 and 200 until we reach one of their maximum bids? Because technically you, you could. If, if, if they said their maximum bid was, uh, $15,000 and the highest bid was 10,000, then somebody goes 10,001, somebody goes 10,002. Another one that's 10,001 being a hundred dollars more than anybody else goes to 10,003. Where do you stop that? I mean, and I just like the fact that somebody has to make their bid the best bid that they, they wanna pay and, and if they want the property or the, whether it be a real estate or a piece of equipment we're selling, they should put down their, their, their best bid and that's the way we should approach it with them. And, and again, I, which one of the policies, I think, uh, Tim and Tracy did a lot of work on theirs. I, I, I like it. And, and the one that was in our packet is, uh, short and simple also, so, I'm, I'm on board, but I just wanna keep the conversation civil. Thank you.
So just one other thing I'd like to add that there's actually a pending case in Vermont right now on the sale of a tax sale property. That could change everything yet once again, um, on what we can ask for a sale price. So there could be more to come. I'm trying to follow it right now. There's, there's some, the, the, the big debate on this case is that does the town sell it for, should the town sell it like towns have been where they can cover their costs with delinquent taxes and, you know, associated fees? Or should they be selling it for whatever the town has it assessed at? And then funds go back to the person who was tax sailed. So, um, we'll see how that plays out and that might change some things when we acquire properties at tax sale. So.
Dave, I have a question about the email you sent with the policy. Cause in it, you said that it maintains the opportunity for people to bid even after an offer has been sent to the town. And I'm wondering what you meant by that.
Well, the biggest issue that was, that the board had with the, the last swamp lot sale was that folks weren't provided ample notice before the 1061 notice was posted in the newspaper. So if someone comes in with an offer, we just tell them, look, here's what we've gotta do. We gotta open up a bid process. We've gotta notice the bids in the paper and then you have the opportunity to bid. So we, we couldn't accept an offer because we would be following a bid process.
And so when you say it maintains the opportunity for people to bid even after an offer has been sent to the town, you're saying.
Why would, the town wouldn't accept an offer? They'd have to go to a formal bid process.
I, I'm just quoting out of your email, cause it's.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, if someone came in and said, hey, I wanna buy your seven acre swamp lot out and, you know, off of 73, I wanna give you 500 bucks for it. But well, here's the process we have. We have to do a formal bid process. Now that you're interested in it, I gotta put a notice in the paper that says, you know, notice of, of, you know, opportunity to bid. And then they gotta bid on it, just like everybody else.
I see.
Or if anybody else does bid on it.
I just didn't know what you meant. I understand now.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, you know, I wanted to go back and with, Tim and I had discussed this on, you know, on the transparency part of it. And, you know, and I, this is where I think Tim and I disagree. In a, in the, I, I feel that the, I felt transparency. I, I, I agree with Tim, transparency for an open bid versus a sealed bid. The, the open bid is probably more transparent. But as a select board member, I feel as, uh, the transparency for me would be if it were a sealed bid versus an open bid because, um, I, I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the bids, I don't know any of the bids that came in. And the only, and that's how, and that's how we came up with auctioning that day was for the transparency part was to have the auction on a said day.
I have one additional question, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't see in either policy the fact that, uh, what we had discussed earlier that the, on real property, that the purchaser would, um, pay the attorney fees for the transfer. Is that something that, that, uh, falls into the illegal category, Dave?
I don't know yet. We'll find out when they settle this case, I guess.
Okay. Cause I mean, that, that one, that one that we didn't accept that time, we were, you know, by the, when we had one of those swamp lots for a couple hundred dollars, it was gonna cost us twice that to, to transact the sale. So we had talked about having that be part of our policy. So.
Yeah, nice. I see what you're saying, Doug. Um, like I said, I think it's gonna change again after we see what the outcome of this case is.
Well, it allows the town to set a minimum bid amount, right? So, I mean, your, your minimum bid amount could be X plus attorney's fees or whatever.
Right, right. Yeah, I think you would have to set a minimum bid amount. I mean, that's.
Yeah. More discussion? Any public comment?
Seth?
Yeah.
I've heard enough. I'd like to make a motion to accept the policy that the town attorney has already okayed.
Okay, so this is the one that's titled Town of Brandon's Policy for Selling a Town Asset. It has items A, B, C. They both have A, B, C, but anyway, this is the Dave drafted policy.
Correct.
By Connie. Is there a second to adopt that one? I'll make a second to adopt that one. Is there a discussion?
Well, I would like to just, um, say as far as process goes, that according to our minutes from the 27th, an update and so I, that it's appropriate for that update to be at least considered. And I realized that Brian's made the motion for Dave's policy, but, um, it does seem that it's, um, that as a board, we had a process for, um, for Tracy to go out and, and do this and we, and he did that. And so I think it deserves, um, a vote.
Well, well, just in the course of what you said, you changed what you were asking for. So at the beginning, you said you felt that the policy that Tracy was authorized to go ahead and, you know, develop needed to be, deserved to be considered. And the whole reason that I set the board's discussion the way I did was so that both of these policies would be in fact considered tonight. And I think they both have been considered. But then at the end, you said it deserves a vote and that's a different thing.
No, I, I just think I'm, um, I, I guess I wanted that to be in, um, to be noticed. That, um, that, uh, it's up to the board to, um, go through these processes. And I think Mr. Atherton to, um, to go off on his own and make, um, a policy is, um.
Well, he didn't, I mean, in his defense, he didn't go off on his own. He asked me what I thought about policy, whatever. And I did not have time on my own to develop a draft. And Dave and I, in a telephone conversation, came to, well, why don't you go ahead and see what Connie thinks will work?
Yeah, I hadn't realized you suggested that. That, that's different. Thank you.
So we do have a motion and a second. Is there some more discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
I believe that, uh, there should be something, a second, uh, paragraph under purpose that would tie in the marketing, uh, section of the Wyman, um, Giles', um, proposal. Because I feel that we need to have a, a set way of letting the public know. And so it should be listed in our, in our policy.
Well, Doug, on the one that I drafted, on the last paragraph before the adoption line, it does say that, oh, I'll just read it. "In addition to following state statute, the town will use sealed bid process, set a minimum bid amount and deadline to accept bids, which will be posted on the town website, in the newspaper of record and at the town office and Forest Dale notice boards."
Okay, yep. I now, I now see that on the back page. I didn't flip the page over while making my notes. Thank you very much. Cancel my amendment.
Further discussion or ready to vote? Ready to vote. All in favor of adopting the policy, um, that Mr. Atherton drafted and ran by the town attorney? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no.
No.
Any abstentions?
Oh, man.
So right now I have Coolidge and Hopkins as aye. I have Giles as no. I don't know if I have a vote from Wyman or Bailey yet.
I'm gonna go aye.
You're gonna vote aye?
Uh, then I'm going to abstain. The ayes have it.
Billy abstains. Three, two, one, two, one. I'm sure the board does thank everybody who, um, had enough care to spend the time that they have spent developing both of these policies. I think that having the discussion has, um, and having the policy that we have now replaced, I think all of those things have been good for the board and have been good for the town in terms of developing what it is that we value in the process of selling a town asset. That was number six. Number seven are the bills. Are there any questions on any of the bills or would there be a motion to take them as a consent item? All three warrants. Any questions first? No questions have been heard. Is there a motion to take the three warrants as a consent item all at once?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Coolidge moves the approval of the three warrants. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second for Mr. Wyman. All in favor of this consent item, approval of the three warrants as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Okay, so, um, the board will now recess at 8:23. We'll do our liquor control commissioners meeting and then we will come back for an executive session. So at 8:23, the board, the select board recesses. I'll call the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners to order with an interesting agenda. Is there a, a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Coolidge moves adoptions. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second for Mr. Wyman. Any changes to the agenda? All in favor of adopting the agenda as prepared, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Item two, well, actually, Dave. Is Dave there?
He just stepped out for a second.
All right, let's do it one at a time. Item two, approval of the liquor control commissioners minutes of August 10th.
Make a motion to prove it.
Motion by Mr. Wyman and a second by.
Yeah, me.
Coolidge. Any errors or minutes? Any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted? None are heard. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? Doug Bailey, you abstaining?
Oh, I know. I'm, I'm in favor. Aye.
You're in favor.
I must've got bleeped over.
Item three, review of a request to cater, um, previously approved by the town clerk, Common Ground Restaurant on Saturday, August 15th. So this was previously approved because it happened after our last meeting, but before our current meeting. Any questions on that? There's no motion required. That's board advice only. And item four is the questionable one. There's a, a rescind and outside consumption. There's Dave. Dave, why do we have a thing to rescind an outside consumption permit?
So, because when the application was put in for the outside consumption, it was for the event in the park last Saturday. And the folks decided not to do it in the park, but they wanted to have tables out front. So the liquor inspector told them to do this policy, this permit, but after the fact was realized that it was supposed to be for outside consumption in the front for the rest of the year to like, so I think to September 15th, which it only was supposed to be for a one-off, a one event. So as a former selectman would have said, the ship has already sailed on that and that the state needs to be a little more clear on what permits are being granted for what.
Well, I need to be a little more clear with what I'm voting on here. So they, they asked for a one-day permit, but were given a permit through September 15th or the other way around?
So they asked the, the original permit. I'm gonna see if I can say this right because I don't really know either. The original permit was done to have, to sell drinks in the park and like the fenced off area like, you know, Red Clover does over here. At some point when that permit had been sent in, they decided not to do it in the park because they didn't have enough staff, but they could do it out in front of the building. Which then May's actually did the same thing. So they contacted, I guess there's a liquor commissioner that lives in town. They talked to him and, yeah, I can't think of his name. And he said, well, fill this one out and send it in and there's no fee for it. Well, the wrong, the one was sent in, not just for a special event permit. It was done for a time certain or something. I don't know. I really don't know.
I guess I'm confused. Are, are we talking that they wanted to do it down in the park? But now they don't wanna do it in the park, but they wanna do it in, in front of the restaurant on the sidewalk?
No, this is usually not my thing. I don't get involved with liquor licenses, but the event was last, it was two weekends ago. So.
I, I, I thought you were saying it was gonna be ongoing all the way till September 15th.
No, that's what this new permit says that the liquor commissioner told them to fill out, but they only needed it for a special event.
Okay. I got it now.
It's kind of a moot point at this point, I think.
Now, Common Grounds, is that still considered May's?
Yes.
Okay.
So, put it this way, if that permit was still effective, that would mean that they could still be selling alcohol out on the sidewalk in front of their building until September 15th. That was not what was intended. Their intention was only to do it for that day.
But the state is allowing them to do it through the state of emergency? Like that's why. But I mean, that's, that's what the option was.
Right. Well, they can sell it. You can walk out of the establishment with alcohol in your hand and it's really, you know, you can drink it anywhere at this point right now, but.
And to clarify, this, this one is not for May. This is for Ripton Mountain Distillery.
Right. And it was for the event that happened on the 15th.
Is everybody clear on the Ripton Mountain Distillery need to rescind the outside consumption permit that apparently they've issued a bit erroneous?
Okay, yeah. Gotcha.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to rescind the permit?
Yep. I'll make that motion.
Okay, Coolidge, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Bailey seconds. Any discussion?
Do people wanna have it rescinded? Or we wanna rescind?
Their only intent was to do it for the one of, one event on the 15th, Doug.
Okay. I, I have no problem with approving what has already been done. I, I have a problem with ongoing liquor sales on our sidewalks.
That, that's not what they wanted. It was only supposed to be for a one-off event. That, that's not what they wanted. It was only supposed to be for a one-off event.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the motion to rescind the permit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Number five.
Motion to adjourn the liquor.
Mr. Coolidge moves to adjourn the liquor commissioners. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
From Mr. Wyman, it's not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
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 No. That's unanimous. Okay. So now we'll call the select board back to order. Are there any announcements anybody wants to make before we go into the executive session? Anybody who's still on the call? Okay, um, so we're gonna go ahead. Um, the select board's back in session at eight thirty. Is there a motion to enter the executive session regarding appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee under the provisions of Title One VSA, Sections three thirteen, A, three?
I need to attend.